Forty-two. I'm gonna call the Village of Cross Plains Florida Prestige meeting of January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. To order, roll call please.
Trustee Brandon.
Here.
Trustee Brenner. Trustee Portar.
Here.
Trustee Brooklyn.
Here.
Trustee Pomakowski.
Here.
Trustee Calwaiter.
Here.
President Langford.
Here. Can we stand for the village of allegiance?
Of the allegiance to the flag, the state's sovereign, and to the republic through which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we're at public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes, although a village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that's not duly noticed. On the agenda. We have anybody here today that would like to make a public comment? All right, do we have anybody on the computer? That would like to make a public comment?
No hands.
All right, I hear we have a couple to be read. We'll start with Bobby's first.
I received an email from resident Joanna Korea, thirty-one oh eleven Melody Parkway. Village Board, I would like to take the opportunity as a community member to comment on the need for the village to commit to pursuing, to pursuing a new public pool. Having a six and ten-year-old, we practically live at the pool from opening to closing day. Not just at stingrays, but during open swimming lessons. My ten-year-old dreams of working at the pool one day to spend even more time at the place she loves. I would also like to advocate for the construction of a pool that would allow zero entry, preferably in a larger space with greater access to parking. When we first moved here in twenty thirteen with a baby, we could not utilize the pool to the extent we wanted to with our daughter due to limited options for safe play for her. For years, we were compelled to travel to Middleton for swim lessons and water play due to their amenities. But we would have much preferred to keep our money and time in our cross plains community. A new pool would open up access for not only young families, but those with other mobility issues as well. In summary, the pool is an important component of our community every summer. Please maintain safe access to this amenity through the construction of a new pool.
Hey, Brian, you have one?
Yep. I received this email this afternoon from Peter Dirks. Village Board members, my family and I live on Loffenberg Boulevard and regularly use the pool. For the past five to six years, we have been members of the pool. Both of our kids have taken swim lessons and our daughter has been a member of the stingrays. For these reasons, it is exciting to know that the village is exploring options to improve the community pool. And making the decision of when to perform the improvements and where to locate the pool, I hope the board considers two points. Number one, timing. The pool is in desperate need of repairs. The baby pool has been closed for five years and sits empty with an upside metal bowl covering up exposed pipes. Besides being a hazard, the baby pool has become something of an eyesore. The cost of repair or replacement is climbing each month that the village postpones its decision. While everyone knows that something needs to be done, many are ignoring that delaying the inevitable will only drive costs up. Number two, location. The pool should be centrally located. Moving the pool to an edge of cross plains will only require more kids that access the pool on their bikes to cross major roads or bike substantially further distances when trying to reach the pool. The current location near the library also affords kids the opportunity to make use of two village assets in close proximity. I know our kids use the library more in the summer when they are close by each day. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. We go to consent agenda. On report of any trust fee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration on your general business. Are there any that would like to be removed? All right, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda as published.
I'll sign.
I have a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye aye, all ayes. Thanks. No moves. We'll go to village officers report. There's just two things I wanna cover. One is I wanna give appreciation to Public Works for keeping the roads open during the last two snowstorms. I've heard tons of positive comments on, on that. So kudos to them. I know it was long days and hard work. The other is I heard very positive comments and actually concern from residents that same group, Public Works, had a couple water mains that broke during that extremely cold weather. So for them, be out there fixing that was a very difficult task. So, you know, residents appreciate it and I know the board does. Vice President?
Yeah, we have a lot of anniversaries in January. Officer Hannah Mather and Marge McGraw are one year each. Chief Tony has four years. We believe that already. There you go. Officer Roger Silver is fourteen years. And Captain Barrett, the library is eighteen years. So congratulations, everybody. Thank you for your dedication.
Thank you. Any other trustee reports? All right, village administrator?
Okay, I wanted to also acknowledge the excellent job that the public works team has done plowing during the, the latest three-day snow event. Also, a very great job by our parks and rec team for participating in snow removal through plowing and maintenance of parks throughout the village. As far as other updates, I wanted to pass along one quick note on the special events permit. We were going to have that topic back for review this month on the board agenda. It's taking a little bit longer for staff right now to be looking into a few additional items, one of which, as we've talked to department heads, we're considering just possibility of waiving the fee, but having a tiered system come back for review in, in February. So more to come on that soon. And then lastly, I have a pre-scheduled vacation the ninth of February in the following week.
All right, thank you. Department heads or other reports, anything? Bobby?
I don't think it was specifically listed on the agenda, but I think Brian's is where you had the the finance committee had asked for an update of things that we've been working on for the last couple of years and kind of they wanted to know. So we did this project one. So I just put this update together and then they wanted to share it with you guys. We looked at a bunch of different policies. We made some changes when we left as they were, notably the sewer adjustment policy. The committee had recommended that twenty-five dollar administrative fee, which was passed by you guys. And then also the purchasing policy, you guys approved recommended changes on that. We also did extensive research into both wheel tax and transportation utility, and we presented both of those reports together. I think, yeah, the one was pretty early, twenty twenty-one, and then the other in March twenty twenty-three. So I think we just kinda left them here as informational at this point. I don't think we're planning to move forward with either of those. We also researched sidewalk replacements and assessing that back. So we did present that to you guys in May of last year, and a new policy came out of that that we adopted in September. Where I believe initial sidewalks will be in new developments paid by the developer and then going forward, any repairs, I think for like fifty-fifty sport, which means no one in the village. They also created a consultant survey last year. So we could get feedback from our department heads if they, our consultants were doing a good job, if they were providing good value for what we're paying them. So we compiled the results. And again, presented those information. And then just, I know we had a new assessor and new mowing contractor for twenty twenty-four, which was not a result of the survey. And then we also did a lot of research into mowing last year, knowing that our new contract added a lot of costs. We wanted to see if it would have any cost savings to bring the mowing service in-house. And then we presented that to you guys last July. It was decided to go up a contractor again for twenty twenty-four and then maybe revisit that again. We picked up with a big one that President Langford kind of spearheaded. So we did the pilot program in fall twenty twenty-two, did a survey, and then it was village-wide next fall. And then just some other things we've worked on or are working on. We did some studying their property tax levies, water and sewer rates, statutory restraint. We had a segregation of duties comment and audit we looked at. We were currently working on room tax stuff and then in the future, maybe some village hall police station work.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to general business. Discussion and possible action accepting of the cross plains pool feasibility study. I think we have the consultant here. They'd like to come up. So we've, we've received your report. We go, I don't know if you wanna do a quick summary of that or would you like us?
I'm not sure I wanna leave or flip through all a hundred or so pages.
No.
So my name is Blake Tyson from Architecture and I am the owner and lead planner for our firm. And appreciate you guys having us on board to take a look at your existing facilities. So as you know, over the summer, August would have been, you know, midsummer. So we came through and did, my team did a full assessment on your existing facilities as you write in the report. We did a full code compliance checklist and assessment of EDA and current building codes. And as you probably would expect, there were some deficiencies throughout the facility. Overall, it's clear that your community loves the facility and gets a lot of use out of it. However, there are some structural cosmetic and M code issues in pretty much all categories throughout this. So we completed that piece and then the next step was to come back to the board with options for, you know, new ideas and what those scenarios meant. And so our, our second piece, which I think you also have in your packets, were several scenarios. One, looking at redeveloping your existing site with a new pool. That, that met the demand of the members of the public and took that input from the survey and hope the outreach that Mike and Andrew did. And so the amenities that we have shown fit the intermediate right then through that outreach process. The second option explored the parcel next to Bear Park. And if we were to relocate the facility out there, what might that look like? And what greater opportunities might that site afford and not less? And so that, that exhibit two A explores what that could look like. We're not saying that that's the absolute final plan, but it at least shows you the opportunity of going bigger, adding more amenities. You know, on the bigger side. So lots of pros and cons for both, I would say. You know, one of the pros of going to the new site is that it would allow you to potentially redevelop the existing pool site into a more community scale park facility, which you're currently lacking in that sector of the community. So that's an advantage. I do, you know, I wanna cite the email that was read tonight and one of your residents. I think they're absolutely right. Having a facility in the quality of the community is important and obviously has better value at the time. So I don't know that I have a preference over A versus B. I think both of them have merit. And I think that's where you guys have to make the hard decision about A, do you wanna keep the quality of the community? We did look at a scenario to order if we could potentially walk away from the community scale part of the other. You're not reckoning, you're not deciding urgency. Would you think that long-term cross plains is better off with some? Well, I can get you into more detail on that, but that's a high level.
I had a question to you, but it doesn't matter which photo. I know a lot of places are separating the diving from the regular pool. And one of the main things, they can shut that down if they don't have enough staff in, you can keep your pool open, but totally. If it's not totally separated, are we able to, with that design where the water is flowing through from one? Can you still do that or is that all considered? The pool now and you gotta have guards for all of that.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And you can still isolate areas.
Okay.
Only staff part of it. You know, for example, in the mornings, if you're in a master swim program, you can shut off the zero depth entry by area and you know, monitor.
Okay.
Or vice versa.
I think we do that even better.
Yeah, I know. I just didn't know if it was legal, because everybody that I've seen have built separate diving wells and then pool basins and then they just don't open the diving well. I didn't, I just wanted to make sure if we're gonna do this that we're within and I didn't know if it was followed the, the waterway that you.
No, it's, it's a really good question. And actually, a lot of the private swim clubs are building separate dive wells. They run separate dive teams and they like to be able to have a little bit more control. But I will say that a lot of those facilities look like they're independent vessels. They're actually hydrologically connected underneath the concrete.
Oh, that would make sense.
Because that way, when you have a single vessel, you only have a single mechanical system and filtration.
Okay.
And if you have two, that's an added expense for a whole second system, because you cannot run two separate vessels on one system. You used to be able to. So you see a lot of old pools that, that have grandfathered systems, but you cannot.
No, I, like I said, my big question was, is, if, if, you know, I, I agree that the water's gotta flow to both. I just didn't know if we had to bring the concrete all the way abroad to keep them separate from the visual from.
I know, that's a really good question, but yeah.
Okay.
So I will say it was, it was a fun little exercise. You know, when we first looked at your existing site, we thought our, our options are gonna be a, have admitted, but I actually think we came up with a pretty creative solution for that site and we were able to get everything that was asked for on its site. And we were able to maintain your existing parking. So that was an expense saved. So certainly from a financial view, that scenario is going to be far less expensive than, than you'll have, you'll have the demo cost of the existing building and vessel, but I think that it was far outweighed in terms of expenditure dominance.
And I couldn't tell. Is the shelter the same size or is?
It is slightly a different configuration. We actually moved it. I think we moved, we moved it further south, so into the site to give the parking lot a little bit of breathing room, get a sidewalk through there. We fattened it up and, you know, shrunk it. And actually, the biggest difference in this proposed building design is that it's a breezeway concept. And so as you, as your patrons come into the space, they don't actually have to go through the building. They can come through the exterior emissions window. And the way we have are the storage building, you could actually put an awning or cover over that. So it truly does become a breezeway and that's a really popular concept. Now your, your restrooms are accessible from the deck. And we usually try and integrate family restrooms for, you know, families of children of, of both sexes and so, yeah, it was a fun, actually. So with that, I think I, I hand you the tough choice of how, you know, you wanna proceed, but at least, you know, you have some, some good options to work with. Trying our best to give you some, you know, rough idea of what it might cost given today's construction. And we have four cool projects under designing construction right now. So we are pretty insu- with where things are. That said, it's a volatile climate out there and concrete goes up and down every day, so.
What, with that said, was that in here with the cost of either of those or?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So the, the costs, the cost ranges were actually in the initial analysis and there were the four scenarios we provided. And then the, the most recent, I don't know, was a narrative describing how we would accomplish those scenarios. So it really refers back to those ranges of the initial.
Page eighty-two on the P D. Oh, thank you. I got another question for you. These were all based on a concrete vessel, right? What's your opinion? Cause I've been doing some reading. They have fiberglass vessels now and I think it's fiberglass. What is there? And it seems like those are less expensive.
They, they are in a commercial or public setting, concrete is always your best with the durability among that. Stainless steel vessels are actually a thing in a lot of Olympic pools or museums, stainless. That's extremely expensive. It'll be here long past any of us.
Yeah.
Fiberglass, we have actually done some glass pools, but going out to do again. Concrete is true.
And when you say that, is it because it was difficult or you got a lot of complaints because it didn't last or?
They are harder to maintain and they certainly don't last as long. They have a whole separate set of issues than the original concrete vessel it's gonna have.
Okay.
And Mike and his crew have become very good at, at fixing this type of facility that you have and to, you know, to go from a an apple to an orange would require a set of tools.
Okay.
Would you be able to hit a few of the bigger issues that are facing the current pool situation? Like, so, so the board can hear where some of the dire problems are with it?
Yeah, as you probably know, last summer, like your filtration system went out. So your, one of your two sand filters essentially exploded July third.
Uh, second, July first.
First.
What was that?
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's just indicative of the era of a lot of mechanical systems. If you look at any of the site photos that were included in the initial assessment, you'll see some pretty heavy patina on a lot of those mechanical systems. We are fairly confident that there are some substantial leaks in your vessel or your bike system. We know that you're losing fifteen thousand gallons a day. That's unacceptable. We usually say three thousand gallons a day is your high end of, of acceptable loss. You know, anytime a patron is out of a pool, they take water with them. That's called water loss. You also have evaporation. So you can reasonably assume about three thousand gallons at the high end and five times that. So we know clearly there's an issue somewhere. I'm suspecting that it is, you know, near your existing dive well. That's why there's perpetual water sitting under deck. It never dissipates. I think the ground is just completely saturated and the water is never moved. The building is woefully out of E D A and building code compliance. So there would have to be major structural changes to the point that we don't recommend going down out of the building. In terms of pool code compliance, there are numerous locations where you're out of compliance. There in terms of that slope or clearance between the water surface and your nearest instructions. Should I keep on?
I think, I think you've got it pretty good there.
I'm just trying to think if there's anything else. Yeah, you're on your site, on the outside of the pool facility, you know, your E D A slopes are not there. Actually, to get in the front door, you have to go out before and stuff, which is not compliant. All of your gates and vents might have to be replaced. So it's it's a very likely to be that.
Thank you.
But people on your pool.
That's just a couple of questions. Look, so if we're staying in the current site, I mean, to get today, like the pool looks like it eats into the existing parking or park there, just on the picture.
Yep. Yeah, so the way we have it laid out, it would eat into the, I guess that's the south side, southwest side of the library grounds, anywhere that I just playground is. We think there's reasonable space to move that facility to the I guess the southeast where that shelter is, there's that large concrete area. You know, some of that can be repurposed if we needed to shift some things around. We do think there's, there's plenty of space to make it all. But yes, it would intrude on the other side of things.
Okay. And then with that eight-link pool, would the starting blocks be on the side of the diving boards or the other side?
Other side. So it would be on the east side.
And then how deep would they be jumping in there then?
So that's actually one of the things I forgot to mention. Your current depth is not sufficient for, you shouldn't even be using starting blocks.
Yep.
Am I getting something wrong here? Yeah, so you, you really need to be four to six, depending on the height of your starting block and which manufacturer you're gonna go in with. They all have their own recommendation on water depth. And so what you're gonna wanna do is when, if this moves forward into the actual engineering pool vessel, you know, we'll wanna look at which manufacturer you want and that'll be.
I guess, just on the picture, look, I mean, if the starting blocks are on the opposite side from the diving poles, it looks like between four and four feet, three foot, six inches. It's not deep enough for starting.
Uh, no, so we would have, so where that neck is, where the, the concrete peninsula comes out, it's between the zero depths and the lap lanes. So that's, we would dive the pool down. So we'd have a minimum of four feet along that south, uh, shore from south.
Four is enough for very much.
Correct. And then it would probably transition down. So when you're in that bottom corner, you'd probably get six. One of the challenges is trying to keep enough intermediate depth water so that forty-two to, to forty-two inch to four feet inch for lessons, you know, for levels.
Right.
That's a really critical that we try to maintain. But I think with the zero depth, the way you've got it, we have that nice pot right on the next sort of peninsula where you have all that.
Okay. And then the other picture, if it were to be a green, I guess, doesn't have any, have any depths potentially, uh, would, would it be similar?
Yeah, it would. So that whole area, right, can you fit it to a one? So the area next to that concrete peninsula, again, we would try to aim for forty-two inch for the prime lesson space. And then you can kinda see where those two lines parallel with the peninsula tail. We would dive the, the pool floor there to get down to the floor.
And then would diving well there have the same depth as the other one? So it's like eleven feet?
So that really depends on what you end up with for, for heights. You know, one meter is gonna require a ten foot. We prefer a little eleven foot. We think code is gonna change eventually and a ten foot will no longer be the standard. So in our projects, we're pushing for an eleven foot depth. If you go with a three meter, which is a high dive, and you have twelve very new communities, we bring three meter boards. It changes your assurance grades. We see less and less kids interested in that. Obviously, they'd rather be on climbing wall or a drop slide as an example. So, yeah, I think in either scenario, we'd look in eleven foot depth.
Still in there, like you said, you do four, three, five peninsula. So then as it continues toward the well, this gets deeper and deeper. So it's closer. Same thing on the other ones. If they're understanding that we move across and we down, they would get deeper.
Yeah, it's, it's tough because you have to really manage your pool floor slopes very carefully. They can't be too steep until we get to transition points. So for example, when we go from the lap lanes down to the dive well, we can adjust our slope at that point, but you have to maintain clear ladder slopes through the greens.
Yeah, I know. That's what I was wondering, because of that big pool. It's like four feet here and six feet there. Cause you're gonna have it open for people to play in. At six feet, you're not gonna have a lot of people at that end. You know, much more people in the first four lane than in the far four lanes, which is a thing about utilization.
So traditionally, yeah, it's a great question. Traditionally, we would have our two dedicated lap lanes closest to the dive well.
Oh, I got that. So if you're gonna have it for anyone to use, right, no one would be over there playing any.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
You guys are getting into the weeds here. I like that. Right?
Good questions. Well, why do we have you here? Yeah. I wanna know how it's gonna work.
Oh, right. What else you got?
My one was there?
Yeah. Blake, do you wanna touch on timeline aspects of things regarding, you know, closure of the facility, if we were to do it on the current site? By frame and it would start.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good. Yeah, that's, that's a really good, uh, good comment. So, the challenge of building a new facility on an existing site is no one wants to lose a day of revenue, right? Or use three features. And so, all of our pool projects that we've been involved with in the last decade, we have essentially moved the demo crew in on laboring. You know, the day after you close and they start going at it, uh, you know, they, they need to get the underground plumbing done, the vessel walls and floor, or, and the building shell up before snowflakes. And then they can build out interiors to mechanicals over winter, as soon as the frost is out of the ground. And then you start back up on the site doing concrete deck, parking sidewalks, all that stuff. And then you're ready to go in the morning, in the morning. With a site like this, we have a lot more flexibility, of course, you can pretty much build whatever. But I would say, uh, every pool contractor that we know, and we know pretty much all of them in the state at this point, understand that that's the schedule, it's labor day through. Go ahead.
Yeah.
I have one more question related to that slope from the quarter to the six. Does that have to slope that much, or can it be leveled off? Or is that just standard slope in like that?
Yeah, it can, it can be leveled off. There's lots of different ways. We do need to have some slope though for, for drainage when the pool is empty. We need to be able to get.
The water, well, but it doesn't have to be that great of a variant from four to six across those lanes. It could be less, and then you take the dive well down at a faster rate than you get to. Okay, I was just making sure that that wasn't.
Yeah.
But you have to do it four to six.
No, it's a really good question. Every pool is a little bit of a geometry experiment.
Right.
Uh, you know, trying to make everything work to balance, uh, your, your code slopes, your desired slopes, and your drainage necessity slopes.
Right.
So, uh, yeah, it's, that's why we have very fancy three D software to make that all. But, good questions.
Well, yeah, I just don't wanna be telling people that it has to be four to six, and possibly be, Jimmy, more to be more of a flatter, large area for, you know, people to use.
Yeah, so like in this scenario, one option is you can keep that entire north blast, well, this is called north, okay, the north wall at four. And then everything just tips to the south. Again, you gotta make sure you have positive drainage in one direction or another. So whether it's cross sloping or longitudinal sloping, it doesn't really matter.
Right. Like, yeah, right, I think it's probably in either way, and, and the gradient can change also.
The last thing we want is an empty pool with bird bats in it.
Yeah, no, no, you're right. No, I get that, I just wasn't sure if it had to be that much of a difference.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Blake.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Nice report.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, so the, yeah, so the, the next step here is two things. One, um, obviously there needs to be a choice of location and somewhat of what the design looks like. And then also how it's going to be paid for in the timeline. So, uh, I guess I'm open for suggestions. Is that something we send back to the pool committee? To narrow it down, now that they've got some information?
Guess we would want more of the board's input, as far as like, location, what you, what the board is thinking. Um, I know we discussed trying to get a little bit more community input, you know, but the survey that we've got, three hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah.
Uh, people.
Well, if you want, I, I think, to me, though, keeping it where it is at is ideal for what the comments from, the email was, essentially located, people know there. The big disadvantage there, it's really limited parking. And, uh, you know, you look at, even when Swim meets, um, if we go to Eight Lanes, I'm sure Swim team is gonna wanna host conference, um, there possibly. Um, you go to Bear Park, you got more room and clearly a bigger parking lot. Got more flexibility for that, so.
Well, I think also I want to bring up the, in the future, the potential of the library doing any type of expansion and kind of shut that down. I do think something, the, the idea of having a splash pad in our community there, I mean, I don't, I, I completely understand people are very used to having a center located. I get that it is fun having it by the library. But I also think we have to keep in mind where our community is growing. And I look, I look back at a bear field behind my house, and I know at some point, those are going to be houses. And so, I know, there's a lot of expansion that will happen, but.
Well, in the survey that we sent out, it was forty-one point four percent current location, forty-nine percent new location, so it's not, it's.
Pretty bold, too. It's a four percent difference.
I think it's more of a, uh, wherever it is we want in the pool. And he didn't quite hit on it as hard, but like, there's, there's some deficiencies there that were, if we have the wrong cocktail of things, we're without a pool for some. And it's, I mean, it's, we're staring it in the face. We, they did a great job of fixing it the last couple of times. There's a lot of stuff that's been patched. Uh, there's some safety issues as far as staff that they have to do.
Right, I, I don't think anybody suggested that we repair the current. I think the question is the location, how we're gonna pay for it, and the timing of it. So, so I mean, pool feasibility, I don't know what we can really do to come up, like, that would have to be referred to finance if we're talking about four and a half million dollar thing. Yeah, but I still think you guys gotta help a little bit unless you want the board to decide where the pool's going. I, I would hope we tried to get a little bit more input now that we've narrowed some choices. And I would like to see a pros and cons for each spot, so people can make an educated decision on it.
Yeah, and we've done some of that, and I think, we can definitely be more of that. I think the, you know, choosing the location is probably the easiest part in regards to the project itself, for the committee to help with, and the community to help with, I think the payment and timeline is more on the report. And I think if you can work backwards, you can tell us, you know, obviously, we know the project is, let's just say, five million dollars. And we have Swim team, you know, get going and give them a goal, that the village board would really like to see them, or the community would really like to see a valley around, X amount, I don't, not can't give them the amount over there, but, you know, I think that would be helpful.
Right, I'm trying to speak for finance, there's a huge difference between coming up with four million and twelve million.
Yeah, I.
I mean, I don't wanna waste all our time figuring out something like that without knowing what dollar amount we're talking about, so.
Well, I think, I think you put in there, you know, four to six for the type of facility that we are looking at, the eight lane.
Yeah.
So the things that we really.
I thought the one at the current location was four.
Thing that we talked about. So originally, we actually had some, you know, we did a current conditions report, and then came up with scenarios of what the facilities could be. Um, facilities at the current site, but then also facilities around the Bear site. The new Bear site allowed, allowed Blake to go wild, right, and come up with a really cool design that's more of a, an aquatic attraction piece to our community, which had big slots, big boards, you know, had a lot of other things. And that's what he showed in one of the scenario aspects of it, to be the twelve million that we're going to. What we came up with, or what the committee really discussed was, what's really usable for us, and that's what the school report was about, it's like, what can the village really afford? And without a, you know, in our thoughts, without a eight million dollar donation to a twelve million dollar facility, that's probably not feasible. So, we tried to really break that down into the, into the things of the community, and the survey aspect of things, what they really asked for. And what they asked for was zero depth entry, eight lanes, and the other stuff was just kind of extra, if we could have, right? But those were the two major points that we really wanna push on, were the zero depth entry and eight lanes. Outside of that, it's just.
Okay, so then I, I'm, I'm hearing from the board and you that we're looking in the price range of four to six point two million.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is.
So if finance comes up with a number, you wanna kick back, and then you're gonna try to work within that number?
Well, I'm just, I guess, you know, in regard.
I'm trying to figure out what you want finance to do.
I don't, I didn't bring up finance. I'm more or less felt like in regard, like, I mean, Bobby could probably help us figure out, you know, in the levy constraints of what we're gonna have, and those sorts of things, and repayment for capital, you know, in a capital adventure plan, how much the village could hoard in twenty twenty-six with a new village hall coming on, you know, you have all these other things. So it'd be more of trying to, if we were to plug in the pool at a six million dollar, say we got zero donations, and it was a six million dollar cost, you know, what is a likely timeline the village could do that? Or will the village be willing to do that?
I'm, I'm uncertain that debt service comes for levy, debt service is completely.
No, no, it's, let's not get, I mean, it's not completely. It, it, the tax rate, you still have to pay.
Correct.
That's what I'm getting. I'm just clearing that up.
You're right.
To do with the levy.
It's still.
So I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out, what, what, what is your, what do you think the next step is?
Uh, that's why I'm here, asking you, what do you want?
Well, I'm trying to figure out, I, I've given, I, I think there's two things. You gotta decide where it's gonna be, what we're gonna build, and how much it's gonna cost. Right? And then we gotta figure out how to pay for it.
So.
And are we making it where the village is paying a hundred percent? Or Swim team gonna do some fundraising? Are we gonna have a fundraising portion of it where we're saying they have to raise this amount of money, this amount of money? Wha- what's the plan?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great plan. I think if the Swim team knew that they needed to come up with, I'm just gonna throw out a number now, excited, but a million dollars. They, they have a, a, you know, sorry.
Well, that's probably not his idea. We're not holding anybody to it.
It gives them a goal, and it allows like another branch of the sub, the pool subcommittee to start on the fundraising leg of this, saying, you know, once, once we come up with a whole new name, or you come up with whatever the number is that the village board's comfortable with, I think then we're able to kind of go in that next direction. Okay, coming, I mean, we do have to obviously decide on the location. There's gonna be extra costs and things involved with both of them, so. That's gonna have to decide, which I think could be a really good discussion within the community. I think we could actually have a really good, you know, open house, where people are coming and giving us, you know, they're voting one or the other, not like that sometimes.
Cody? As I say, you've kinda made it sound like a two-tiered approach, so like, we need to figure out how to pay for it, we need to narrow it down. Can we do those like, at the same time? Or do we have to narrow this down and then figure out how we're gonna pay for it?
Well, generally with, and again, I'm just throwing it out, generally you say, this is the amount of money we need to do it. Now we try to figure out how we can afford to do it. So I'll give you the village hall, for example, we said five and a half million. We ended up forming a CDA, so we can get cheaper money, borrow cheaper money, and, and pay it back in four years. Because we probably wouldn't be able to do it without that. So, we had a number to start with, and then we figured out, how can we get to that number and still keep it reasonable? So, i- i- I don't, e- either way, but you have to have, you have to have them defined. Either you define what you want and the cost, and then you come up with the money. Or you say, you have this amount of money to spend, what design do you want for it? So it's gotta be one or the other, you gotta start.
Is the village board comfortable with this committee and or that open house meeting to come up with that?
Come up with what?
They come up with the actual facility and the location?
Well, you, you're making a recommendation, yes, I'm comfortable with that, but it's not, that doesn't mean that we're approving it right now.
What's that? I'm sorry.
We're, we're not approving it. We're asking you to give us more information so we can make that decision. But if the pool committee feels comfortable in coming up with location, and the pool, and what the cost would be, and ideas of how to pay for it, I don't see why we would deny that. That's exactly what a committee should be doing. Well, yeah, Judy, and then Cam.
Well, and the way I read it, and I could be wrong, I feel like they were already recommending to us, you know, just, um, scenario C and D. And one is obviously they, at the current, and one is over here. I feel like, the other ones are already saying not, not recommended. Serie, um, scenario A, not recommended, B, not recommended. So I kinda feel like they're already giving us two choices, if I read it correctly. Um, and then I, I do feel like we should decide, do we like there, or do we like the current, or do we like up here better? I feel like that, I mean, they're already saying to us, those are the two that they want. They want C or D.
Well, I know, but C or D are not defined. I mean, they're general concepts, but if you think the village.
C is at the current location, D is at the new location.
Okay, I, I think there's, these were ideas that they came up with.
Right.
You know, I think there's other things. How many parking spots do we want? Are we gonna get more at the Bear Park than we could get at the Central? And how important is parking? You know, you know, the different designs and stuff, how big, you know, there's, while these are conceptual ideas, they're great, it's just honing it in a little bit. And, you know, you're, you're talking about a million dollar span. So obviously, if it's four to five million, there's different things that affect that. Now, if the board here wants to make the decision on where it goes right now, I, I would caution against that. I think we have the report, I think we should.
I'm wondering, so I'm.
Give, I like the.
What I'm hearing is maybe a more detailed pro con list we can get, and we've discussed this, and then providing that to the community to get more feedback from the community. And then we could have our recommendation, and then at that point, the board, well, I think part of it was, we just wanted to work that out right now, and make sure we're. Right, it's like we, we've been doing a lot of work, and we wanna make sure we're headed in the right.
No, I agree, go ahead.
Gonna say, Sarah just took words out of my mouth, like, that's personally what I think would, I think help would just be like a, a little more detailed pro con list. And then even taking that same exact pro con to the community for that, oh, but not so bad, and then just like, you know, that with the addition of feedback, I think would help us be a little bit more, uh, sure about like the decision on, you know, which, which spot it goes to, I think that's kind of the big question.
Judy?
I agree with that, but like, before we can go one way or the other, we do need to know how that it's gonna be paid for. Because we can't just say, yeah, this is what we like, when we don't know. So we would have to say, are this a pool raising, or are the people raising half of the cost of six point two? Or what are they raising, and how we're gonna do it, or how it's gonna affect our taxes or so forth.
I, I, I would hope that's what the committee would do, is come up with some different scenarios.
Cameron? Well, I, I, I think we can do that, but we, I don't think we should tie the project to like, you know, if you don't hit this, we're not doing it, or whatever.
Well, that's what we did over here, that's what we did.
I didn't vote for that, but, but I mean. So I'm just gonna say, if you pay a lawyer to say, we'll do it, and we'll dangle the carrot if you can do this.
I, I think we, I think we need, again, this, there's not enough information to make, this is what I'm talking about, let's get it defined a little bit more. And then we can define also the finances of it. All right, I, like I say, I, I think there's a lot of aspects, but we have a good start right here. We have some visuals, I think. They have a good game plan of let's get a better defined pros and cons. And make sure you guys are comfortable, I'm not sure all what went into the cost on, you know, did you have lanes in there? Did you have the starting blocks, the dive? I don't know what's all, make sure we have a complete packet of what you guys are looking for, and what the pool would look like. Right? So we, we're narrowing it now, not just conceptual, but hey, these is kind of what we would like to see at both sites. Here's what we're looking at, cost, here are the pros and cons for each one of them, here are some ideas of finance, financing it. Cameron?
Uh, do, do we need to have a motion to accept the feasibility study?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Cody?
My question would be also though, so when people come to these meetings and they ask and they talk about it, and say, well, when's it gonna happen? Well, I don't know.
That's a good answer.
It's, it's a tough answer to give out repeatedly, that when people hear that the pool is in dire need, like, when are they gonna replace it? I don't know. How long have you been working on this committee? Eighteen months? They'd like to have some.
Well, here's what you can give them. This building here is in much more dire need when it comes to ADA. And we do, public here comes here, voting and everything, so. And, and I just wanna say, it's been three years. In government, it just takes time to do it right. It's, now, if you can come up with a donor for six million bucks, we could probably break ground tomorrow. You know what I mean? I mean.
Eric, Jay?
Yeah.
I wish, I was at four oh one K doing.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is, people have to be patient that we wanna do it right. We get one shot at it, right? And this is a lot of money for a facility that's open three months a year.
Don't disagree at all.
So, we need to do it right, and I'll be honest with you, you need, we need to build, uh, a foundation and really start getting support behind it. While you're hearing a lot of support, there's a lot of people saying, are we fricking not gonna spend this kind of money on a pool? And I know you got three hundred and fifty or two hundred and some residents, but there's forty-one hundred.
I've been saving that every, every meeting.
Okay, good.
Better community involvement to find out if they wanna drop six million dollars on a project.
Exactly, I appreciate that, and that's, and that's why I think the better defined this is, the better game plan we have. The better support we can get in the community to, to move forward with this. All right, does that sound good? So Cameron, you wanna make a motion to accept the pool feasibility report?
Sure, I'll make the motion to accept the pool feasibility report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all poll same, so move, thank you very much for coming tonight.
A really good job by the school feasibility meeting at this point, this was great.
All right, number two, discussion and possible action, highway KT trail in Dane County tour. Stewardship grant memorandum of understanding, before we make a motion. I just wanted to have a little discussion, because this is pretty much ready to go, but we ran it by our village attorney. And there's a couple things he wants changed in it, and one of them, well, i- it really makes sense, one of them is. There's nowhere in it that says how much of the trail we're responsible for, so there should be some language to the city. Village limits or what we're constructing in, you know what I mean? So that makes sense to be added, and then there's one that's not, is Dane County Transportation uses. They have it where it's just Dane County and that can get confusing, is it Dane County? You know, in the document, if it's Dane County, Dane County or Dane County traffic, so he thinks those should be changed. Uh, our engineer thinks this thing, we, we gotta keep moving this forward. So his suggestion was that we approve this in the sense with the attorney's. Um, changes, recommendations, and allow me to sign it once that happens.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the highway KT trail MOU with our attorney's recommendation.
And allow the bill president to sign when done.
Yep, and allow Jay to have him in God.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I have, I have a question, just concerning it real quick, so on the drawing. Curve is only going on the south side, it isn't going on the north side of the road, is that correct?
I would say it, it could go anywhere, that's pretty preliminary drawing.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
It's definitely on that side, cause that's where the ditch is now, so it has to get some current to handle this little wire. In some capacity, there's no reason it couldn't go on the side. Would maybe a village decision then?
It would be the village's decision, okay, I, that's what I wasn't sure of.
Once, once the project is done, that right away is gonna become yours.
That was my second question, cause this reads strangely like they're retaining.
They wanted any documents that said that, but once it becomes, once the project is over, then that's gonna become your own.
It will, we will actually hold that, so we're gonna hold that road after, cause reading this memorandum, it didn't say that.
No, and that's kind of, the point of the memorandum is that that hasn't become a thing yet, so they want an agreement. Before I steal property, it's their property now, they want an agreement, it says, it's, 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 it's their property now, you're gonna maintain it. But it's kind of this document, it's gonna go away once the project is done.
Okay, okay, that was my second point, well, I'm just making sure.
No, I.
It doesn't say this at all, I was like, I mean, are we doing this and they're retaining the right of way, so then. My next question though is, is that when we do this, they aren't contributing anything to building it at all, but, right? The Dane County is.
Uh, they gave you a grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's like there, in the.
Yeah.
The road is fifty fifty, the county is gonna pay a three percent of the road as mine.
That is correct.
Okay, the county is gonna pay for fifty percent of the road.
Correct, just like they did for, uh, church street.
Okay, well, that's what I'm wondering, cause none of that was in here.
Yeah, but I don't think. Okay, this is what, I think this is just related to the trail.
Yes.
Not the road, Jerry?
Yeah, just wanna clarify, this project is for the trail only, not the road?
Okay.
But, okay, that's what I was confused about, I'm like, this is nothing like what I thought was gonna happen, I got, this is just involving.
It's just the track. Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Cameron, just another memory refresher, the grant is only for the pack, right?
Yeah, we have two grants to cover the pa- the tru- the multi-use trail. That's all we're doing, and that's all the money.
The MOU is necessary because the DNR needs to get this on the books to show the ownership and the arrangement. In order to process that grant.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Hi, Cameron, did we have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so this was discussion, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all polls same, all right, thank you, thanks for coming. Uh, discussion and possible action approval of the certified survey map, uh, for eighty three thirty highway fourteen.
Motion to approve the survey, the certified survey map of eighty three thirty highway fourteen.
I will second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Cameron?
Can these things be consent agenda stuff in the future?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
Well, I, I would, I don't know legally if you can or not, to be honest.
That's, that, that's, yeah, it was just.
I'll make a note, so, yeah.
We did a bunch of these, we're on our own on the planning committee, and it, it feels weird that it comes back here, right, especially for these properties that are.
But I think you need more approval to do it, I just don't know if it's something that can fall on a consent agenda. There are some items that, not.
Yeah, I was just asking.
Yeah, don't, don't know that answer. All right, uh, we were.
Motion and second, we were discussing.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all poll same. All right, discussion and possible action, village IT committee, Cameron, this is yours.
Yeah, um. Uh, this had, I don't know, come up as an idea in the board meeting or two, um, just like, you know, things come up. You know, and we, we, you know, not all of us are technology experts, and, you know, we don't know what's best. And, you know, we're taking a lot of recommendations from our faith consultants, but, you know, so it come up. Do we want an IT committee, so that's basically this topic.
All right, here's my suggestion, I would not make it a committee, I would make it a ad hoc. Group that was tied to the new village hall police station. Cause we should have something for that anyways, and they can obviously work the whole thing. That way it doesn't have to be village employee, I mean, village residents. And it makes it where I don't have to go and find not only volunteers to be on the committee. But have expertise in IT, and I know nothing about IT. So I think that, I like the idea, cause I think we really should have that. But I would leave it up to someone else to pull a committee together of experts. And tie it to the new village hall police station, because obviously, we need that anyways for that. And that could lead into overall village stuff. Judy?
Um, I like the idea of the ad hack versus the committee, cause I don't know how often we would need it either, besides the village hall and so forth. But I like the idea of giving some experts for a village hall and for everyone somehow, something like that. As a committee meeting once a month, I don't know.
Is that something you'd like to leave up?
I, I think that was kind of the, I think it was just here, um. Uh, I, I don't know enough people, I mean, I do outside of the village, but I don't know in the village, but if it's an ad hoc thing, and I could pull from outside of the village. Probably scrounge up a group.
Well, what I would suggest in my next newsletter item, I will put in that we're looking for people. Uh, that have IT experience, and see if I get anybody that would volunteer, and I could forward them to you, and then. You could have a chat with them and see if there's a place and go from there.
Okay.
Now, we just did one, so it'll be a couple months.
I mean, that's, that's fine, I mean, the other thing is the April election, um.
Oh, well, but, I don't, even if you did, when, you can still be an ad hoc leader, it doesn't have to be a. I, an ad hoc does not have to have a trustee.
That's very loose.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're just a working group under the bigger group.
Okay.
And if anybody knows, somebody, if a friend or somebody that's into IT, um. You know.
Have them figure out Jay's emails.
That's your first order of business.
Yeah.
Give that man a firewall and something. I'll, I'll check, I'll ask around, everybody kind of just check around if you have someone in the, the IT. All right, so we're not, we, we don't need to take action unless you, you want to, I say it's just this, it's kind of loose right now, we'll kind of form it up when.
So we can invite them to form the ad hoc committees?
Yeah, find people and bring it back, I mean, obviously, once he gets grouped, we wanna know. Right?
I certainly wanna know who is not.
Oh, yeah, 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 well, well. Well, let's just. Yeah, let's just work on getting a group right now.
The team met today.
All righty, let's go to number five, uh. Discussion for possible action, village compensation plan, longevity system policy. This is, I put this together with my understanding on what was agreed upon when we went through. Uh, the budget process, it's been run through staff, they agree, this is what. Um, people agreed to, so if it gets passed tonight, it'll go into the employee handbook. Okay, Cameron?
I didn't see anything different here from like, the thing we approved before.
Well, there is, the difference is in the book there, it didn't have, uh, implementation.
Okay, didn't have those bottom details, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something.
No. Uh, Judy?
I would think it would put a chain, that we didn't have low down in the last time, but did I read this correctly, so for step one, for the first year, it's. They could possibly get three percent raise, and then another three percent, so they could get end up getting six percent?
No, it's after their first year, well, after their first year completion, they get three percent.
Okay.
Whoa.
But then they, but this is besides the raise.
Well, yeah, this, this is all additional to the rate.
Could be six percent.
If there was a raise of three percent, then yes, that is true.
Right.
Well, this is, I, I, I'm not doing anything new, I'm just making it so everybody understood what was voted on. From the preliminary, from the meeting that we had, and then to the final. So there's no discourse next year, and everybody, it's clear, this is how it works. So, do I have a motion?
I will make the motion to. Uh, accept, no, I would remove this, uh. Policy for, uh, one, the longevity paper.
And I'll second.
All right.
Uh, all right, I, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Oh.
So. I, so, this is the longevity piece, but does, with that being said, does that whole table that was in?
No.
Thing, does that get?
No.
Taken away, or what happened, like, that doesn't exist anymore?
That does not exist anymore.
Because.
The, the next.
That's why I'm saying this is tied to the next one.
No, it's not tied, that's where the confusion is, they're separate, totally separate. There's no, in that document, it looks like they're together, and that's a duplication, but it is not, and we'll talk about the next one. This is a straight longevity, that is it, this is the scale that is for longevity. It is only tied to how many years you've been with the village. Right, that's it, so don't hook it into anything else, it's totally, this is a separate.
Right, I, I get it Jake, but I'm just trying to understand approving this, that I know that now the grading system is. What I read in the other one, if that gets approved, whereas.
No.
When it's rated ten, he makes this range, and that whole entire table that we talked about has gone away, that's what you're telling me?
Yes.
Now, whatever the person gets hired at, whatever that figure is. After their first year, they get their coal raise, whatever raise, and then they get three percent additional, and that's what it is, that whole table thing is.
Yes, that's wrong.
What I'm making sure that I'm understanding the whole system before I vote on this separately.
That's why I have taken.
That's what I'm making sure of.
And that's why I've taken the time to separate things, cause I know there was a lot of confusion in there. So it's separate, so I would just ask that again, this has already been approved, just so everybody knows. This was approved, what we're really approving tonight is making sure you guys agree that this is written right. And then this goes into the employee handbook.
Right, I, I understand that it was approved, but it was approved with the other system also, see now that the other system is going to be like. Removed with the next thing, then it becomes.
I will walk you through what the next one would be.
So that's the point of making sure, how it's gonna function in the whole entire system is what my question has, and it sounds like looking at the other one. The grade scale has changed from what it was before, with, with, with all the department heads can go to ten, it looked like they're.
That, that has changed, and we'll discuss that.
And that's what I think, sure, so.
Okay.
And I'm confused, why do we have to vote on it if it's already been approved?
Because it needs to be placed into the employee handbook. And I wanted everybody here, cause I ran it by staff, because when we approved this. We approved part of it in the budget, part of it in negotiations, and then it was, both of those were approved. But they were never written out, so I wrote them out, so it's all in one. So it's very clear, and this is what staff understands, and I'm bringing it to you guys, so you understand, so we're voting just to put it into. The, the employee handbook, yes, Cameron?
I was gonna say, I like that it's operated too, is if we needed to change this or the base salaries. You know, for whatever reason in the future, it'll be easier to do, cause you wouldn't be looking at a single table, or it's all mixed up.
Very good, that is correct. Okay, any other discussion?
I have, I guess I have one question in terms of implementation. And that's just, well, I understand what the implementation means, okay, somebody's hired in April of this year. Do they get the three percent raise a year from April?
Correct.
Is that how it is, like on your anniversary day, you get that, and you've been here for one year, you start making the additional three percent?
Yes, and that's what it says on the top. Employees after one one get their raise on their anniversary day.
Okay, that's what I was making sure, so that, it is a number of years, it isn't a, but you need, you don't have to wait for the whole entire year to have, okay, that's what I'm making sure of.
No, it's on an anniversary date, not a.
That's what I was asking.
Cameron?
Just wanted to confirm department heads have talked about this?
Did you think I was gonna lie to you?
No, it was just, it was.
If they're all sitting here, I think they would all raise their hands, say, what the hell is this market call? All right.
So I got a question then, so say. When does it take effect then? So we had, you know, Hannah and Marge and all them had a January anniversary date. So did they get a three percent, or is this for like twenty twenty five then?
Well, if you look on here, if they were hired after one one of twenty four, it's on their anniversary. People who had already been an employee is sat down in the implementation plan that was agreed upon, one to five. One to, less than five years, start at step one, five to fifteen is step two. Fifteen, uh, more than fifteen is at step three, that was what everybody agreed to, that was in the, the hall.
Okay, so all existing employees, then we'll do their next longevity stuff always on January first going forward?
It, it's gonna take probably a number of years to get people on the right one, cause they can only move up one step per year. So.
Right, but her question is, what if, like, every single employee this coming year is going to have their anniversary date?
Right.
Do they move a step?
Yeah, well, not everybody, cause the steps are in the first three years, but then the next one's five.
But, but what I'm saying is that, let's say somebody has fifteen years, more than fifteen years of service, they're at step three, their anniversary date. It may fit for this year, do they move, do they give, would they go to step four, but there isn't, you know, step four would be five. Would they go to step four, but there isn't, you know, step four would be five, but does that, so. I I don't, that's what you're saying, right?
They go on their anniversary date, whatever it is, is their anniversary date.
So the. So the, okay, so this is the question, so an employee with five to fifteen years, let's say somebody has six years of service.
Me, you're a perfect example.
Yeah, six years of service right now, right?
Yeah.
Their anniversary date is February second, on February second, do they move to seven years and they get a two percent raise right then on February second of this year? Because that's their anniversary date, cuz they moved up.
Are they going, okay, if someone is hitting their six year anniversary. Is that what you're saying?
Twenty four.
So if someone's hitting their seven year anniversary in twenty twenty four.
Then they would get a step, and they're starting at step three, so they would get a two percent increase because they would now be at at step four.
But that's.
But they would be at step two.
Budget has not incorporated anybody getting this a raise during twenty twenty four.
They'd be at step two, so they'd be moving to step three, so they.
So we passed this in the twenty twenty four budget and no one, we didn't put money in for the twenty four budget? I don't understand that.
No.
Because I didn't realize that it was an anniversary date move on the longevity, I don't think, was that part of our plan?
Well.
That was the initial.
Yeah, so then when are you gonna, when was this gonna take effect in twenty twenty five?
I thought in the compensation plan, it said like you had to wait, like they all started like on January first, it did say that in the compensation thing, yeah, it did, it is, it said.
Alright, it started.
I was assuming everyone just got a January one adjustment every year.
Right.
A mid-year adjustment.
Yeah, there weren't any mid-year adjustments in the compensation.
Starting this anew.
Alright.
No, I agree with you, I think that that's what it said, cuz if somebody hit their. Anniversary date like in August, they didn't get that raise until January first of the next, of the next budget.
That's what my job does, I don't want to get started on getting where you want.
Yeah.
That's not how longevidities go, longevidities are anniversary dates, show me on here where you've seen that, right, there's the report.
I'm not gonna read this.
Well, no, you said you could find it right away.
I said I read it in here, I, it said something like these were happening at the beginning of the budget cycle.
No, that was new employees that are on, under the onboarding section, that's where they talked about that. Well, if we don't wanna pass this and we'll send it back and rework it, I am fine, guys, I.
But I was just saying that the budget doesn't assume people will get a raise on their anniversary dates in twenty twenty four. If we wanna, say we'll pay for those out of comp balance and then the twenty twenty five budget will.
Well, then we'll change this to twenty twenty five, I don't have a problem with that. I I'm just, I, like I say, I voted against this, so I'm, I'm just trying to make it so we're all on the same page, and clearly, even after this, I thought we were, but we're not. So maybe this needs to go back, and let's just load it down right now, we'll send it back to staff, and we'll try to figure this thing out where it's workable.
Can figure out where the money's coming from.
Yes.
We all thought.
We all thought it was twenty twenty five.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Then why aren't you putting it in twenty twenty four's budget?
Or not, she or not, that's what she.
I know, but I mean, but we voted for for the twenty twenty four project.
Uh, no.
She was born. True.
Okay, whatever, so is everybody, let me just, so can we, should we amend this then? To say twenty twenty five? Is everybody comfortable with that then? I'm?
To the first year, twenty twenty five, that way we love the board.
Okay. So can I have?
I'll make a motion that we approve the longevity K program to start January first, twenty twenty four, and yeah.
Twenty twenty five.
I'm sorry, January first, twenty twenty five, and that it's on their anniversary date though, starting the twenty, starting in.
And that's what it states.
Right.
It states anniversary dates. Cameron?
So just to be crystal clear, the only thing we're modifying on this is that very top date.
No, well, we're doing all the ones down below to all the ones down below. Alright, do I have a second? Alright, any other discussion?
I I guess what's um. That that makes sense to do the ones below two, the one to to twenty twenty five.
Well, if we don't have money in twenty twenty four, and everybody wants to start it in twenty twenty five, I don't understand why we would change.
Trying to dot eyes and cross these.
Well. But that would mean.
I mean, that, I mean, no one hits a step increase or a longevity.
This year.
This year, that is correct.
We've kind of built that into what we were asking for.
Okay.
In our, twenty four wages, so it was kind of built in.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I just, I just wanna do.
Alright.
Verify and make sure everyone's on that page, sounds like we are.
But this, if you change that. Well, I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna get into this, so we can change the whole this one.
Alright. Uh, we need to vote on the amendment, so all in favor, which is the changing of the date. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
If I, I'm still a question.
Good.
Because if we push this out a year, an employee in twenty twenty four. Well, we'll be fine, it's fine, sorry.
Okay, try again, all in favor of the amendment, say aye, aye, all polls same. Alright, so now we're at the original. Amendment to adopt this with the changes of that date. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all polls same. Alright, I, do we need a roll call vote, cuz there's some people like.
No, you just, you worded the second part.
You said, you said amendment again, you meant motion.
No, the amendment changes the original motion.
Right, you said amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, alright.
I was looking confused.
Alright, let's just say the, the original, we're voting on the original motion with the change of the the year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All polls same, so who, alright. Alright, so now we're at. Discussion of possible action, village compensation plan, position grade system policy. Alright. Uh, let's have a motion and then. Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the uh proposed uh position grade system policies, or second.
I'll second.
Alright, we're at discussion. I see there's puzzlement on this, so let's just, we're gonna take the long path then.
Well, I, okay.
Go ahead.
I was gonna start with a question, but if you wanna, you can start with the goodest.
Alright, so back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, the village. Uh, hired a group to take our. Positions, our different job descriptions and place them into levels. This company uses the grade system, so they placed uh all our positions in grades one through ten. Based on the job description. In twenty twenty one, September seventh. Staff got together and updated the grade system, because it hadn't been graded for seventy, updated for seven years. Then in the proposal dated June twenty sixth of twenty twenty three, our staff upgraded it again. Uh, to uh. Using the same system between June and August, it was flipped around where. Ended up being the positions were to the left side of it, and the grades were multiple grades on there. There was no real. Understanding of compensation or how um it worked, and then the confusing uh. Spreadsheet was there, so at the same meeting that we talked over longevity, I walked through the. Grade system, and I'll do it again since none of them is still up there, so this is our longevity schedule. If you read what uh Michael was talking about. Grade system, you'll see that it repeats itself. Same time period, same everything, and then what's not on there, which is on there, you have the increase. In the grade, while there are three grades in each job description, there's no. Definition or formula, uh, how someone moves from one grade to the next. Or how you um come up with. An increase in salary as you move up, it totally flips. The grade system, the grade system is for when you have a, a job description, you place it into, so what I did. Is I went through what was missing on all of these are the benchmarks that places people into grades. So I spent. Quite a few hours researching different levels, which you see here, the different levels of decision making, authority, responsibility, and supervision. That was my feeling, what was missing of the benchmarks. So when I talked to staff, they said, no, this is not what they were thinking. And they agreed that this is also undefined, so they were okay with going back to the system that we've always had up until that sixty day period. On how we do the grading system. So in this grading system, it breaks down, and if you go to the the scale. The bottom one where the the scale is, it has the positions. All of those positions uh with their input. Uh, are in what they feel are the right ones, everybody's salary that we approved for twenty twenty four falls within the ranges. So we are good to go there, and if you read the opening paragraph, these ranges will change. Annually, the board will have a chance to change the ranges, so if we give people, everybody gets a three percent raise, these. Minimums and maximums will go up three percent. So they'll always be within these. Now, when we hire somebody in these positions. That's when you take into consideration what they bring to the job and puts them within those ranges. So what this does is pretty much cleans up the system that we've had for a good decade. It gives us the tool that's needed to place people in the proper range in case we come up with new jobs in the future. And it gives everybody kind of an understanding of what the different. Grades mean when it comes to decision making, responsibility, authority, and supervision. So there is no money attached to the grade system, it is only for the position. The range is there, but you don't. You don't get a raise because you're within that, you get a raise for other reasons, it may be longevity, it may be a colon. There's another piece coming down the line that it might be something else, they may take on some responsibility that we think they should get paid more. Now, if someone goes and their job descriptions changes. And staff feels that they should be at a different grade, then they will come back to us. And they'll say, we believe this employee should be at this grade, and we believe they should make this dollar amount, and then we would make that decision. And again, this was just trying to clear up what we passed that. September meeting, alright, Cameron and then Judy.
Conceptually, I have no problem uh with the, basically the range uh of salary. I, I, staff did put a lot of work into like kind of figuring out that base number in the new system, you know, based on like eight percent of the um. You know, rate from nearby villages and stuff. I mean, this is close, but it isn't exactly that, so, or we, or how? I guess, how did this be, where did you, did you come up with these numbers for the range, or was it something staff came up with?
Uh, it was a mix. Uh, I took what was done before, what we decided on what people's salaries were. What range they were in, or grade they were in, and then feedback from the meetings that I had with staff. So it's a mix.
Okay, just as an example, like the, the absolute. You know, first year, first grade in the old system was at forty two and a half. But a great, you know, the very lowest someone could make on the, the new system is four. So I guess that, I'm just trying to figure out where the delta came from there.
Uh, I, I think what you're, if you're looking at what they had, they did not have anybody in grade one or two. I think they started with grade three. If I can go back here. So, yes, they had nobody, they moved everybody in grade one to two, up to grade three. So those were open, so I just incorporated them and stretched them up. So while they had that, you'd have to really look at grade three to see if it's close.
So when you, you say, just the, the previous system, we didn't have any current employees fall in grade one or two, is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying their recommendation in the report was under the, you know, this is. June twenty sixth, twenty twenty three is when they recommended moving, not having anybody in grade one or two. They moved people up. So I, I guess I'm trying to figure out, what is your concern?
I understand what you're saying, I bet, sure, the lowest pay starting was forty two five, and your lowest pay starting is forty thousand.
Exactly.
That was basically what he's saying, when I went back and looked at the old table, Cameron started at step one, grade one was forty two five, and you started at forty, I noticed that as well, I went back to the old thing, I'm like. How, these numbers are different than the old.
But what they were, I know, but.
That's basically the question, why is it different than the table?
What table are you talking about?
The, the old straight step table.
Okay, the old table which you're referring to is not the grades, that's their salaries with longevity across showing.
Yeah, but that, but step one is, their longevity.
But step one was, I, was it Renee, who makes the forty two fifty?
Uh, the lowest was.
Okay, so she's been in, so are. What's that?
I thought I was supposed to say names.
Well, it's open record, what I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to give you that, what the agreement was meeting seventy to eighty percent of a starting. Wage of these four jurisdictions. We had very few people at the starting wage, right, that was the argument, they make more than the starting. Now, if you wanna move that last one up to forty two, I just gotta make sure that the people stay within that, I don't, it it's a range, it really doesn't matter. You know, I, 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 but I, I'm open, if that's what someone, if you really wanna do that, as long as we don't place somebody where they're. Not making the starting wage, that's where we can't be. Every, we've, we've given everybody their raises, we've decided on their salaries, they have to fit. Besides where they fall in, to me, it's just not a. A material thing to worry about.
Okay, that's, I understand, that, that's fine. But when somebody, say we, I'm just gonna, a public facilities two worker comes. And applies for a job, are we listing it at forty four thousand dollars, the sixty eight thousand dollars is how their job description is gonna be listed, because that's the range of that position?
I think what Jerry will do is find out what qualifications he wants them to be at, and then he will. And then he will come up with a range that he thinks is reasonable and it should be, it must be between these ranges. I don't know, you know, and when he, when he makes that call, you know, someone with a CDL probably is gonna make more money than someone without a CDL. Right?
Definitely, yeah.
You know, so it it plays in there, but you look at these ranges, they're very large, there's give, there's a lot of flexibility there. And you gotta remember, every year they're gonna get bigger, potentially.
Right.
I doubt if they'll ever go down. They may stay the same, I don't know, but technically, if you read the the openly policies. They will go up if we give people three percent raises, they're gonna go up three percent, so everybody will stay where they're at.
Right. But so for new hires, they have the discretion if they're gonna hire a. Public facilities two, he can.
Yes.
Go within that range.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, there's no requirement that they start someone at the minimum. Now, they may have somebody fresh out of high school that has absolutely no. You know, skill sets really, and they're gonna be training them, they may start at that. I I don't know.
The only question um or the only comment that we had when we were discussing this was that the policy that we just passed as far as being able to post without board. Pre-approval only allows a department head to go out and post a position. At or below the departed budgeted employee that resigned or transferred or whatever.
Right, and that's, and that's what I thought as well, that you could only post at the budgeted amount, if you find somebody who has a lot of qualifications and thinks he needs to make. Ten thousand dollars more or if somebody did, or ten thousand dollars more than was budgeted, that ten thousand dollars would have to come to the board for approval to. Correct, in employee.
And we're still gonna be safe with this.
Yeah, sounds good.
Anything, oh Judy.
My question for Brian, that is somebody, like, okay, I like the ranges, I think it's great, um, but when we do review, um. Are we, or we also, we whatever reviews. How does performance get put in there, like, let's say they're late every day for work or they take too long in lunch hour and things like that. Does that affect their pay increase when you guys are doing it as head, as head people, or is it always standard, no matter if they're good or better for you, they get the same? Same.
Um, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, depending on what what was accepted from the language, from the performance. Or the compensation strategy, if an employee was not meeting the minimum standards of proficiency. As deemed by their department head, they could be either placed on a performance improvement plan or. Withheld um their scheduled within grade increase on their anniversary first step.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All polls same, so move, thank you. All right. Number seven, discussion and possible action, village request for qualifications for new village hall police station. Uh, this has um. Just to be totally honest with you, the history behind this is I took the documents from the Midtown Station, modified them. For this, Brian's wife is an architect, she reviewed them and made a lot of good changes. And it was viewed by the village attorney. So these have been reviewed and I think they're. Ready to go. Are there any questions on any of these? Uh, the big question I have is uh the processes we'll be interviewing. Brian and I will be sitting on that, someone from staff, is there another board member that would like to? Sit on that uh committee to. Review and interview the architects, it'll probably be during the day.
Is it just the interviewing of the architect, it's like a kind of a job interview or is it like?
Yeah, yeah, they they generally what they do is they put on a presentation. On, you know, jobs that they did, their staff qualifications, um. You know, that kind of stuff.
I I either, I could do it or Cody wants to do it. As long as it's between the hours of nine and two, I can do it.
Oh, we can start with that.
Either one, do it. You wanna do?
Okay.
I would, I'd be interested.
Okay, very good.
Part of the reason.
So it'll be Brian, Cody and I, and then I'll let staff uh choose somebody, and then we'll bring the results back. All right. So do I have a motion to uh accept this document?
I motion to. Accept the request for qualifications for the new village hall slash police station. Documents to go out. To be published.
Yeah, well, yes, thank you.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the polls same, all right, very good, we will sit, I'll sit down with Brian and we'll try to fill in the block for dates. And Monday to Friday is good for you, nine, between nine and two, okay.
No, one thing I was gonna say is that I did confirm that the League of Wisconsin Municipalities website does have a link where we can post requests for qualifications. Uh, documents, so we can add that um as a late addition to the RFQ.
And what we'll also do is when we get the final version of it, we'll send it all off to you, so if there's architects that you know. Feel free to send it out. More people that, huh?
I said I don't know any days.
Well, I don't, but you know IT people.
Yeah.
All right, I need a.
We'll be going in closed session.
All right, second, all right, roll call vote please.
Dusty Calvin, yeah, Dusty Brad.
Yes.
Dusty Paul Calvin.
Yeah.
Dusty Borckman. Yes, Dusty Brunner is excellent, Dusty Borckman, yeah.
Yes. So we're gonna go into closed session, it will only be the. All right, we're ready, uh, we're taking no action after the closed session, we're at future. Uh, agenda items, are there any future agenda items? All right, we'll go, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
So move. All right, I have a motion to adjourn with a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all polls same, all right, good job, guys.
Good luck, man.
Yeah.